Let me open it up for some Q and A. We're gonna try to move the mic around so you don't have to come. I'll even let you use mine if you go get the first question.
Thank you. I'm looking here. I'm gonna give you this. If you haven't seen it, see it. My hour coming. South River, alright? Who's supposed to be in on this?
Okay. Uh, who's about? Who's here from environmental, from infrastructure? Who? Okay. I know Ted sent someone instead of representative Ted Reinhart. Okay, Susan, you wanna talk about that in South River? Okay. Susan is our natural resource manager, is that the correct title?
And I think what you-
I don't think the mic is open.
It's on, it's on.
It's on, okay. I think what you handed him was that article about Richard Grove going, "I spoke with Mr. Grove today, and I called him to thank him for work that he had done." And we are planning to meet with Mr. Grove and other members of DeKalb County Departments, my office and water management, Rosie Franklin and a couple of others, to talk about moving forward with this initiative to do more at that cleanup at the South River. He is a very big advocate. He does not even live in DeKalb.
But there's also a task force. Do you wanna talk about the task force?
There is a task force that has been working on that and will be engaging them as well. And there will be funding available through the consent decree related to DeKalb County. And so we are marshalling our efforts to focus cleanups along the South River. And so it's very timely that you should mention that. And we are working on that and we'd be glad to include you in those discussions.
Obviously, I saw the photos, very disturbing photo with all the tires dumped in the South River. And we appointed about a year ago the advisory task force that, you know, when issues came up once before about pollution in the South River. And that task force, and Betty, do you wanna add anything to that?
Um, yeah, I can do the topic. The task force, um, they're working very closely. Yeah, what I want to say, Director, and just in fact, they put together a whole plan of action and they've been meeting on a quarterly basis to address all of those issues. And they represent citizens.
And these are citizens, not the KFED employees. So our goal is to actually address those issues that are raised by those citizens, okay? Okay.
Hi, I'm Greg. First I wanted to say that-
Is the mic open?
Yes. First I wanna say that I think the county and what we have done for this area, for this facility, and part, and this was a great job that was done here in upgrading this area. My question goes to Sugar Creek Golf and Tennis, which we have, we've been waiting for a renovation that I went to a meeting to discuss maybe about three or four years ago. And we had plans together. And actually, there's splash, there was a splash allocation for that facility. And to this day, I think that work, no work has been done or they haven't broken ground yet in having that done. Now, I hear that maybe it's on the calendar now, and I would like to have that addressed.
Yeah, uh, while someone comes up to tell you the exact timeframe, we're building a new clubhouse at Sugar Creek. Uh, I was out there with our police officers just recently. Went playing golf, but I was out at the facility and I did a tour of the old clubhouse, the one that exists now. And I need someone to tell me maybe who's-
Roy Wilson.
Okay, Roy can tell us. Roy Wilson's Director of Parks and Recreation, but he can tell us what the timeframe for the new clubhouse is. And you might also wanna tell me about the movie that's being filmed at Sugar Creek. You know about that?
I do.
Okay.
Tyler Perry is doing a movie at Sugar Creek. And the contracts are in place. Now, our contract and purchasing directors here, it was approved at the last board meeting. And we are hoping to break ground by the 1st of December for your new clubhouse at Sugar Creek.
And when is the scheduled completion date?
At 55 weeks.
52 to 55 weeks. So about a year, by the end of next year?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, does that answer your question? Here's a follow-up question.
Yeah, I know, we, there was one-
Here's a follow-up, Tyler.
Yeah, I think there was 1.2 million that was, we discussed in that meeting three years ago that we had that was splashed for that facility. Is that correct?
Same amount.
Still, still the same amount.
Same amount.
Alright.
Thank you, Roy. I gather my folks here are helping with the ones I can answer. Yes, ma'am, right here.
My name is Gabya West and I'm co-chairperson for ACT NOW, Eric Coalition for Transit NOW and I'm building, laying building leadership for empowerment and a DeKalb County citizen for 23 years. And I wanna speak to everybody that's here who's, I imagine everybody here is a DeKalb County resident, that the CALE needs to, we need to start talking about what are we gonna do about the transportation investment act, what position we're gonna take? Because even though we didn't get the 225 mill for the East I-20 corridor, there's another win to get that, which is an unshackled Martin penny. We get rid of the 50-fifty. We can still build the I-20 corridor with our position of how we wanna spend our entire penny. So I think we only have one year, and because I am also a 22-year marketing employee, there is a lot of information that we talked about on the governance. Now that the project list has been decided, COAs, now it's time to hear what we want the transportation system to look like in metro Atlanta. So I just wanna reach out there, you know, and as a DeKalb County citizen and very active in this process, which you know, I want to participate in the governance discussion and how the CALE have the first opportunity to unleash that 50-50, 30-plus-year shackel of Martin's penny. We can get it now and still get the I-20 corridor. And I'm gonna close by saying, the benefit of supporting this design, if they would unleash Martin's penny, is because we don't have a 10-year penny, we have a lifetime penny. And that's the difference in all other counties compared to the CALE. Thank you.
Got you. Those are very good points. And let me, uh, let me do my best to put that in a context for anybody who may not know, understand all the issues related to the discussion. Uh, if you've been following what's been in the news and in the Sunday paper, next year, there's gonna be a vote on transportation projects in the 10-county metro Atlanta region. This is the result of legislation that was passed by the state government that divided the state into 12 different regions. And the Atlanta metro region is made up of 10 counties, including the city of Atlanta, obviously, DeKalb County, and 11 other counties. And the way the legislation was drawn up is that 21 elected officials from those 10 counties were appointed to sit at a roundtable. Uh, the one, the chief elected official from each of the 10 counties, then one mayor from each of the 10 counties, plus the mayor of Atlanta. And that's how we came up with the 21 members here in the Atlanta region. And our task was to come up with a list of projects, transportation projects, that would then be on the list to be voted by the voters in July of 2012. Now, what makes this vote so different than other votes? Instead of it just being a DeKalb County vote, it will be a regional vote. So it will be determined by the majority of voters within the 10-county region. And so that's what makes it different and unique. If a county's vote, however, should not support the referendum and the referendum passes, let's say nine of the 10 counties vote in favor of the referendum, but the CALE votes it down, for example, and it passes, then the CALE would actually be penalized when we go to get national funds from the state. So it has a lot of quirks written into it. When we started looking at how we were gonna come up with the project list, everybody put projects into the pot, both transit projects, including Martin, and transportation roadway projects. We had $23 billion at once, but the penny is only generating just over $6 billion for regional projects. There's a local, there's a couple billion for local projects, but $6 billion for regional projects from the penny. And so we had to take the $23 billion list and whittle it down to $6 billion. And that was a job for the roundtable. And I think, we didn't do a, come up with a perfect list, but I think we came up with a good list. I would've preferred to see 60% of it go to transit and 40% to roadway. We got 53 to transit and 47 to roadway. But in DeKalb County, we're getting about $1.3 billion in projects, about 20% of the amount coming into DeKalb County. And of that, almost a billion going to transit. And that's a good mix. What you're saying is that that's only one piece of the transportation picture. We're gonna have to make a decision about whether we, as a community, are gonna support the tax. And, you know, what I've said is, when we talked about the I-20 corridor, because there's been a lot of talk about that, nobody got everything that they wanted, understand that. We cut $23 billion down to $6 billion. It took, it's gonna take its estimated $522 billion to build a heavy rail line to Westridge Alpha Road. We got $225 million out of that $522, but we've advanced the ball. We didn't start this discussion with the Transportation Investment Act. We're not gonna end it with the Transportation Investment Act. But if it passes, we've advanced the ball by $225 million for the east line and by $1.3 billion for the CALE County as a whole. And that's a significant advancement, more than we've done in 40 years. And no other source, no other way to do that. I can take $1.3 billion or $225 million to Washington, and I stand a good chance of getting another 150 or 200 million, something like that. If I take zero, I get nothing. But there's some other issues that gotta be untangled. One issue has to do with transit governance. We know that we have a transit system that is not really a regional system right now. It's a system that's only being supported by three local governments, DeKalb, Fulton, and Atlanta. And we need something better, something more equitable than that. And so I'm a member of the Atlanta Regional Commissioner. As CEO of the CALE, I sit on the Atlanta Regional Commission. And other regional commission representatives and I have sat down and we've come up with a proposal, we've given it to the state representatives, to the governor, lieutenant governor, and the leaders at the state level. And we said, this is a good plan for metro Atlanta because it's a pay-to-play system. If you're gonna play, you gotta pay into the system. That's fair, and that's equitable. We didn't go back and ask for the money for 40 years in the past, but we said going forward, this is what we think it should look like. There is a committee, a task force appointed by the governor now, and we've got three DeKalb County representatives, Billy Mitchell and Mike Jacobs and-
Ron.
Uh, Ron, Senator Ron Ramsay's sitting on that committee. Who else on the CALE? Okay. So they're sitting on that committee and they're gonna come out with some recommendations. Several of us elected officials have gone and testified to them and they'll make some recommendations to the governor. But the General Assembly needs to fix transit governance, we think. And we also think the General Assembly needs to address this issue of Martin's restrictions on how we can use the existing penny. And when she says it's a penny for life, it's because there's no sunset. We finance Martin through a penny sales tax right now here in DeKalb County. And there's no 10-year sunset on that. And so Martin is restricted, though, on how they can use that penny. And those restrictions, I believe, need to be lifted. So we need to continue to work to build a truly equitable regional system, number one. But at the same time, we've got an opportunity to advance transportation and transit projects here in DeKalb County and throughout the region through the penny transportation referendum next year. And they're all separate, but to some degree intertwined. Yes, sir.
I appreciate you explaining that again. This is why, main reason I come to these meetings. Uh, just as a thought, this is my projection.
Yes, sir.
When they put the 16 miles of 90 cents a mile, and I don't think the states have lived on this peak pass, they're not gonna live the restriction. They're gonna have to have free to ride, 'cause they told them that two years ago. And the governor now is gonna try to change it. I want you to explain what you know of this, 'cause I read the paper like the Bible. So they have 184 more miles planned in this insanity, where they're gonna try to get that 90 cents or less per mile to create these lanes if people will pay it. But from the feelings of the people, all, it appears this isn't working, obviously. They even pack it up on parallel state roads to the side of that. So it becomes clear that that's not gonna work. If this money, as you know it, might not, because this is all legal, that money should be put into transportation on the state level.
Yeah, uh, I don't know that I can directly answer that. And I wanna get you, Betty, can you get his information? Because that's a Ted Reinhart question, but I can tell you what I advocated for in the roundtable. That local governments, local governments have been getting hard. And what I want y'all to know is that when you occasionally, people like Commissioner Johnson and I, we run into someone who'll say, "You all aren't doing what you used to do." And the answer to that, to some degree, is that we're doing a lot with less, not just because our revenues have fallen. When real estate values fall, and everybody knows real estate values have fallen, that's our primary source of revenue, 'cause we charge property taxes to run much of local government. That's the way the system's designed. And then the state has shifted the, their, a lot of their responsibilities down to the local level. So what they've said is, there's certain things that we're no longer gonna do, and we're gonna pass that down to local government and you be responsible for it. There are other things that the state has failed to take on, like either the responsibility to run a regional transportation, transit, a regional transit system, or to thus far ensure that there is a system where all regional governments pay into that system. Or to fund Grayling. Other public hospitals like Grayling actually get state funding and don't depend on two county governments to support them. And so when we were sitting around looking at transportation, my perspective was that those responsibilities that belong to the state should be funded by the state and not shifted down to our government. And I'll give you two examples of that, not necessarily the ones you are asking about. But one was, there was an issue about Coretta funding. Now, you can imagine, anytime you get 21 elected officials, some urban, some rural, some from large cities like Atlanta, large counties like DeKalb, and others from small places like Kennesaw and Norv Ross and Jones Creek, you get a lot of different philosophical perspectives. And so at the end of the day, Coretta did get funding, but Coretta is a state system. I advocated that some of the money that was gonna be used to fund a state toll road, Georgia 400, is a state road with its own independent source of funding and a potential to get other sources of funding to supplement that, should be paid for by TIA. And then we could use some of that money for transit, both here in DeKalb and other places. But I lost out on that, though. So it's about some compromises. I'll get you the exact answer to that question, okay? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just want you to go back. Beginning to hear, Sandy Johnson. I just want you to go back to something that you said that stuck with me. It is my plan, because South DeKalb has no transportation where I live, to vote no next year on that vote. You mentioned, however, that we could be penalized if we were the county that voted no. So explain what you mean by that, please.
Yeah, I think there's two things. First, let me explain your issue and then let me explain kinda where we are if it fails regionally. Um, without advocating one way or the other, I, you know, I'm gonna be open-minded. I wanna see what the legislation does. But the legislation that passed the state, understand this is state legislation that's gonna give us an opportunity to vote statewide, region by region, for these penny transportation referendums. And the way that it's written is, if the referendum passes in a region, but fails in a county, and it's Ted, oh, Ted's not here, Gordon's not here. Who's here? Alright, so make sure I say this right, okay? Am I right on this? Am I right in what I'm saying? Okay, listen to what I'm- Um, without advocating one way or the other, I, you know, I'm gonna be open-minded. I wanna see what the legislation does. But the legislation that passed the state, understand this is state legislation that's gonna give us an opportunity to vote statewide, region by region, for these penny transportation referendums. And the way that it's written is, if the referendum passes in a region, but fails in a county, and it's Ted, oh, Ted's not here, Gordon's not here. Who's here? Alright, so make sure I say this right, okay? Am I right on this? Am I right in what I'm saying? Okay, listen to what I'm saying.
I believe that if it fails for the whole region, then the region is penalized.
No, I think the individual counties are penalized.
That may be case two, but I know that it-
It looks right, am I right?
Yeah.
I'm right?
You're right.
Okay. He was in the meetings with me, so I'm gonna go with him. But I'll confirm this, okay? If it passes, if it fails in the region, the region just goes back to having no additional funding and none of the transportation projects get done. And that's sort of the, I'll talk about that in a minute. But if it passes in the region, but doesn't pass within the individual counties, when those counties go to get their state match, there's a match that we can get from state government on projects, those counties won't be eligible for the same percentage of a state match, okay? As they would otherwise be eligible for. And that's the penalty.
So let me, let me make sure I understand what that means for us. As a voting citizen, we have already paid for something that we don't have, okay? And now if we vote no on what would be there for us, other folks, out of our money, we would be penalized in things that we might have gotten otherwise. I, I just, we lose, lose, lose?
No. No, no.
No, 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 I think, I think that's not exactly right. Because the penny that we paid for is for Martin. And Martin's underfunded, but we did get, but we did get Martin. Martin runs in two counties. The Martin rail and bus system runs in two counties, in the city of Atlanta, because we paid for it with a penny sales tax. So I wanna be clear, we paid for Martin, we got Martin, but if we're gonna really be a rural city, and when I say city, I wanna be clear, I'm talking about a world metropolitan community, not just the city itself. A lot of us identify that we live in Atlanta, even though we may not live in the city of Atlanta, okay? So we got a Martin system, we pay for that Martin system now. This is a broader transportation tax that will be used to fund Martin improvements and upgrades, what we call state repair. You work for Martin, you keep me on this, too. Will be used to pay for the Coretta system, which runs express buses. Will be used to expand the Martin system because of projects that were included on the list, such as the extension of the I-20 east rail line, the Clifton corridor extension, other Martin projects in other counties, such as in Cobb County, Gwinnett County, some money to begin some studies in Clayton County and the Beltline in the city of Atlanta. Uh, so if it fails, if it passes in your region, 'cause remember I said it's a region-wide vote, but fails in your county, they put in a penalty. And so that's an incentive to not vote against it, I guess. There is a penalty that would hurt us. It doesn't take away what we've already received, but there is a penalty going forward.
So it's only a deduction?
Yes, it's not a deduction. It's a deduction. But, but, the gain for the CALE County, I mean, there's some other things that need to be worked out, but we're putting $800 million in and getting $1.3 billion out over the next 10-year period. And that's about 146% return on investment in the CALE County. Now, compare us to some other counties. I was talking to the chairman of one of the other counties and they're only getting a 70% return. You see? So those are the, I mean, I think we don't-
I still can't get to work. My public transportation work, man.
Well, you know, you may be able to. Here's the only thing I can tell you, without taking a position, yeah. The reason why I wouldn't be so quick to say no is because if there's no funding mechanism over the next 10 years, you'll be just where you are 10 years down the road. Let's say this, 200 or worse, someone said. But $225 million on the table is $225 million that you can leverage to maybe get $400 million within 10 years. And the chances of getting a bus rapid transit system, and let me, if anybody wants to know what that is, go to Eugene Oregon BRT and see an example of a bus rapid transit. It looks like a rail line on a dedicated right-of-way or a light rail system. Commissioner and I, Commissioner Johnson and I, were in a National Association of Counselors meeting in Portland, and they kinda have like a light rail Beltline type system. And we rode from our meetings to meetings on that. It was clean and it was efficient. So I look at it this way. I wanna live in a $500,000 home, but I can't afford a $500,000 home, but I can't afford a $200,000 home. A $200,000 home is not everything I want, maybe personally, but it's not bad living. I can choose to go ahead and buy that $200,000 home now and build equity over the next 10 years, hopefully, and maybe I may be able to buy my ideal $500,000 home. Or I can say, I can't even get the home I really want. I'm gonna choose to live homeless for the next 10 years, 'cause I want a $500,000 home. The reality in life is that sometimes we can't get everything we want. And the reality in politics is that we often don't get everything we want. So sometimes we have to realize that we can get a bite at a time. And so that's just proof of thought. Yes, sir. And then I'll move back over here.
I'd like to speak loud and clear. Now, tickets? Theron Fratter, DeKalb resident. Okay, I heard your question. What I'm hearing you saying is, in regards to this projection, in regard to this projection, have you done the homework regarding what will be the split between the various counties in regards to the revenue share or proceeds that will come from the referendum? You've done that?
Well, it's been done by staff. I, I, you know, yes, it's been done.
Okay. Brandon? I think what I'm hearing from the DeKalb County voting populace is that there has to be something in it for me in order to go forward with it. Like we had the one penny sales tax at first and now the second turn around. Will DeKalb be the benefactor of the additional funds that they're receiving, like Winnett or Fulton County, that area? Will we be equally distributed for our vote? And if not, then back to the, I hear some no's over there.
Well, you answered the question, I'll give you my best-
Okay, um, my question is, the ratio, the breakdown of how we would benefit from our shared vote if we decide to go forward with it. And that's the question that, in regards to what she was asking, how would we benefit before we move forward?
Alright. To get the specific numbers, go to the DeKalb County's website, dekalbcountyga.gov. And I understand, I believe it's at the bottom of the left page. Does anybody know? I think it's at the bottom of the page on the left-hand side. And you can click and then you can go, it'll connect you to a link, Atlanta Regional Roundtable. And you can see the specific amounts that are gonna be spent by county and on each individual project. I agree with you and I think somewhat, I think you actually said that there's issues of equity that- Okay, okay. And several people said that. There's issues of equity that we would hope that the legislature will address. They're looking at transit governance. And what I've recommended as a member of the Atlanta Regional Commission, they do, is to come up with a pay-to-play system for transit, where all counties who participate in the regional transit system or connect into, because what we have right now is we have Martin as the core, and then we have Cobb Community Transit, Gwinnett Transit, but they all travel through the core. So what I believe we should do is to have an equitable system that's, that is based upon whether you participate and that's proportionate to your population and how heavily you use the system. And I think that if that is addressed, then that, you know, there's some other- Transit, Gwinnett Transit, but they all travel through the core. So, what I believe we should do is to have an equitable system that's, that is based upon whether you participate, and that's proportionate to your population and how heavily you use the system. And I think that if that is addressed, then that, you know, and there's some other issues about, right now with the penny that MARTA gets, there's restrictions on how they can spend it, and those restrictions ought be lifted too. And I think that if, if, you know, if the proponents of the tax want to see it passed, it would be a lot easier getting to that point if those issues are addressed. But, let me answer the second, so, so that's part A of your question. Part B of your question is, what's in it for me? If none of that happens, what's in it for us? It makes the decision much more difficult for us, but here's what's in it for us. Six point one four billion dollars worth of projects on a regional basis, transportation projects. And, and I don't know the answer to this, but let me just hand pass this, how many of us in this room, when you go to work every day, you travel across county jurisdiction lines? Anybody here travel across county jurisdiction lines? So for, and, and, and this is probably not a representative sample, so for people who travel across county jurisdiction lines, it will have some impact, it will make a difference that some of those projects aren't located in the cab county. But for those who are concerned about the projects just in the cab county, the cab county is going to be getting, I think it's a hundred and forty-five percent or a hundred and forty-six percent, uh, return on its investment. How do I measure that? About one point three billion dollars of projects coming into the cab, and about eight hundred million dollars being raised by people, not all citizens of the cab. Anybody who comes to Stonecrest or Rockdale Parish, it gets credited towards the cab, you see? The same thing happens when we go to Lenox Square, okay? It gets credited towards Atlanta and Fulton. But to the extent that other people come in and spend money here, that penny goes here. Eight hundred million going out, one point three billion coming in, a hundred and forty-six percent return on investment. Now, why was it important? Because I mentioned a neighboring county, and I'm trying not to name them by name, but if, if you force me, I will. Um, name them. Richard Owen says his county's only getting, Rockdale County's only getting seven percent return on investment, okay? But he voted for it, I think, because a MARTA rail line going out east gets a little bit closer to his county, and sometimes you gotta take a step and get a little closer, and we can leverage that, maybe get a little closer altogether. But why is it important that the cab county, because I was asked this, we negotiated this deal, and some of my colleagues on the roundtable said, you negotiated a pretty good deal for the cab county, and they tried to work to undo that before the final vote. And I didn't wanna talk about that publicly because I didn't want them to then want to undo it before the final vote, but the project list has been made now, and let me tell you why it was important that the cab, and Atlanta, and Fulton get a return on their investment that was positive, because we've been paying the MARTA penny. And that's what I told them. I said, we've been paying the MARTA penny, and therefore, it only makes sense that I get a positive ROI. I'm a CEO. If I was a CEO of a corporation, you would be my shareholders, and my job would be to make sure you get a positive ROI, return on investment, or guess what? I'm out. So I'm your CEO, and you're the stakeholders, that's why we called this, we could've called it a report to citizens, but we wanted the message to be clear, we called it a report to stakeholders. And my job is to make sure you get a positive ROI.
Love you, love you. Um, and I hear all of that, and all of the members of the roundtables as well, what I like to hear from you is that you support this, and how do you bring us on board? What are the things that we're doing to turn it around? I was at a meeting at, um, Malupul, and there was so much negative response. Hearing what you say makes sense, it makes a lot of sense. I need to hear you say that you want us to support this, and I think the recall would probably be much more positive.
Well, in history, man, it's good. Let, let me tell you what I want right now. Let, let, let me tell you, let me tell you what my vote on, uh, October thirteenth and the roundtable represented. I thought we had a fair project list that was both good for the region, but more significantly good for the cab county. Not perfection, because in life, we don't attain perfection, but a good, solid list, and I understood when I voted for it, that number one, here's a plan, Plan B is zero, okay? I also understood that this plan has a significant ROI for the cab county citizens, and I want therefore this plan to go before the cab county citizens, so that they can make the decision. Now, I'm gonna wait and watch and see what happens in the General Assembly when they go into session, as they address transit governance, and perhaps some other issues as well. And, once we get past January, there's gonna be a lot of marketing in favor of this referendum, and then there's gonna be some talk against the referendum, okay? But the best reason I can give you to support it right now is, number one, I wanted to make sure that you have the choice, and you understand that by voting this down, there is no Plan B. Six point four, one point four million, if you wanna look at the whole thing, and it's not just a six mil, billion, excuse me, billion, it's also a fifteen percent local match that comes to the cab county, on, on, on top of our one point three billion, a hundred and twenty million over that ten-year period, will come to the cab county, twelve million a year for ten years, and Burrow Ellis, Larry Johnson, and the other commissioners will sit down and decide, how are we gonna use that twelve million dollars a year for added roadway improvements, bike lanes, sidewalks, you see? With no Plan B in a tough economy. So, I like that, I like having that choice. That's what you'll hear from me, I like having that choice. And you'll hear more from me as we see what the General Assembly does, and as we move forward in the coming months. Okay, thank you. Gil.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. I, I wanna go to another area, and I know you've been in discussions regarding sanitary waste pickup.
Yes.
And, uh, doing it once a week rather than, than twice a week, for the reason that we can use that department to also clean up our main thoroughfares and other streets and communities and get those things in decent shape. And, uh, and that may work, that one a week pickup may work, but there are considerations, um, and I've been in discussions with people. The concern is, when you have garbage, um, picked up once a week, that's a lot of garbage that's sitting around over a period of days. Um, but there are municipalities that are doing it, but they have prepared for it in terms of using the proper type of garbage containers, uh, that will take about three times as much garbage as in all trash container, wood or narrow, and those containers on wheels, basically. Atlanta uses that system, and they just roll it down the driveway, and in fact, Atlanta purchases the garbage containers. Um, and I think people would be very amenable to that if we do our research and put together a complete package, where even though they would have to house more garbage for a longer period of time, it won't be a problem if they have the proper type of containers to do it with. If that's not the case, then we're gonna have a trash mess throughout our community with the number of plastic bags that are sitting around and, and halfway in a garbage can over that period of time. So I live with you all over giving consideration for that.
Okay. Uh, I wanna, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I wanted you to know that we haven't made any decisions about, uh, whether we'll change our trash and sanitation pickup.